...School District Board of Trustees meeting has been called to order at 5:32. We have invocation by trustee Diane Brown, uh, Pleasant Allegiance, and Roll Hall.
May bow our head please. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts. We thank you today for all your blessing, for the successful outcome of our school events, and for all our staff and both teaching and support members. We ask that you bless them abundantly and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, and courage and strength. Be with us in our deliberation and help us to be wise in the decision we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always through Christ, the Holy Spirit forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On one Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I have Roll Hall by Mr. Davis.
President Barti.
President.
Vice President Frank, Secretary Reed, Trustee Ambrose.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Johnson, Trustee Lofton.
Let the record reflect that we do have a call today to Kentucky to put out independent school district business. Mrs. Davis, I'll mention that the primary source of public education in the community is to meet the unique educational needs of our diverse population by providing a comprehensive quality education for the students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. Close meeting. Under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.074, the board will meet in closed meeting too. Consult with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigations, including settlement offers and other legal matters in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under Texas disciplinary rule of professional conduct of the State Board of Texas are clearly covered by attorney-client privilege. Consider personal recommendations, Texas Government Code 551.074 as follows. Consider and if appropriate approve the employment of teachers. Consider and if appropriate approve the employment of child nutrition director. Consider and if appropriate approve the employment of elementary math supervisor. We will now go into closed meeting and reopen at 7:00 P.M. Your dismissed. At seven o'clock, we have participation, Mr. Greg Richards, Mr. Greg Richards. And let the record reflect that trustee Secretary Reed has joined us as well. Minutes, I'm sorry, staff reporter, Dr. Porter.
Thank you, President Barti. Uh, we are just happy for to be back at school this year. I mean, this week, uh, a week ago, last Thursday, we were wondering if we would ever get back to all of the rain, uh, but we are happy. It's a beautiful day here in Port Arthur. Uh, we're happy our students and our staff are back with us. We did have some staff members who were affected by, uh, the tropical storm, the depression, uh, but we are supporting them and if they need anything, we're here for them. Uh, we didn't have students that were affected as to what we know right now, so we're, we're happy to be back. But we do, uh, Adams Elementary, Lucian Adams Elementary had a base sale the other day for one of the schools and Hampshire, Connecticut, and they raised over a thousand dollars. Yeah, so they were donating that. The high school is picking up supplies for, uh, Beaumont United. So, uh, we want to train our children and teach our children that we were very blessed when we had heart and people really came to our defense and supported us. So now we want to do the same for others. It's not about always receiving. You have to give as well. So we want our children to understand that. So we're, we're just very thankful that our schools did not receive damage. We had some damage at the high school in the library, but that was from the covert and we know what that's about. So we are working with TechDoc and the Port Arthur, Port Arthur City in order to create, uh, repair that, uh, the ditch. So we're, we're on top of that as well. Uh, this month, we celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Americans, a history of serving for Asian, and that's from September 15th through October 15th. And Mrs. Lamassie once again has created a book. So we are very, very happy. A lot of our schools have, uh, activities going on for the month. So if you get a chance to go by and greet anyone, uh, see, see it is pretty good. Please do. Also, Governor Abbott has proclaimed October 9th, 2019, as Texas Education Human Resources Day, and they set aside to recognize and honor the important contribution made by school staff who work in human resources. So we do have a proclamation for our human resources who are thanking Mrs. Kathy Longo, Miss Kathy Longo and her staff for everything that you do to help us to get, uh, employees, maintain employees, sustain employees, hire new people. Uh, we had a lot of conversation in the back this, today about hiring people and making sure that they remain with us. So, uh, thank you for your hard work. Also, on last Friday, we completed the first six, six-week period and it's going by really quickly. Uh, so we are happy we were in CBAs and we concluded CBAs this week. So we're happy about that. So we're moving along and we're on schedule and, uh, we did miss two days, Thursday and Friday, and we will decide what we will do with those two days sharply. We'll let everyone know. As we move forward, uh, we do have, um, uh, Dr. Oliva. Uh, Dr. Oliva is back with us. She was Mrs. Oliva and, uh, now she's Dr. Oliva and she has been working closely with Dr. Getwood and, uh, for our targeted improvement plan. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Getwood to introduce.
Thank you very much, Dr. Porter. Uh, been the board president, uh, Barti, managing the board of trustees, as well as, uh, Dr. Porter, super general of schools. Uh, as Dr. Porter indicated, we have been working very diligently, uh, with the targeted improvement plan. Because of the academic accountability within other campuses, we had to prepare a targeted improvement plan and I want to commend, uh, Dr. Oliva and her staff for the hard work and diligence that they have shown in developing, uh, this TIP plan. And I would say to you that the climate and the culture of the school, uh, we see a fast improvement there at this point and we're delighted, uh, for that improvement. And as we move through the, uh, targeted improvement plan, I will lay some groundwork for the targeted improvement plan and, uh, Dr. Oliva will pretty much talk about the targeted improvement plan or those who are talking to improve the plan. What I want you to understand is that what you see tonight is a snippet of all of the work and effort that, uh, that's gone into the development of this plan. Uh, she and her staff have worked, I mean, diligently, days and nights and even away from school, uh, preparing this plan. And what you see, you will not see the whole game. You'll see the goal that we are trying to accomplish, but it entails a lot. With that being said, if we can look at, uh, page one, or it's page two, the only thing that we want to say about page two is that that is the Jefferson Overall Subri Accountability Ratings and it's rated according to, uh, domains and student achievement, school project progress, closing the gaps. Those are the domains or those areas that were, uh, rated. Next, page three. Page three, when you see that those are accountability interventions. The state has, uh, designated interventions for campuses receiving certain letter grades. So we have followed, uh, the accountability intervention requirements, uh, as established by the state of Texas. Page three. And they developed what is called in my CBA's, the Texas Education Agency, developed the Effective Schools Framework. This is a robust model for developing the targeted improvement plan. And, uh, there are many steps that you have to follow in developing this plan. But if you look at the diagram, effective instruction is at the core of what we do. It's at the core of the, uh, framework developed by the Texas Education Agency. Page five. These are levers and what the Texas Education Agency has said is that we must develop our plan in conjunction with the five levers that you see. Those are prioritized level one through five. And under each one of those, uh, levers, you will find essential actions and the plan must be developed around those levers and essential actions. And I want you to know that, uh, everything you see up there happens to be research-based. So the plan that we have developed is based on things that are best practices and what the research says works. Okay? Page six. You get to the targeted improvement plan and all that is, what you need to know about that is self-explanatory there. We're trying to reach a destination and the state has, uh, described the criteria that we use to reach that destination. And if you look, that's the TIP development process. CLT, Campus Leadership Team, that's the team that I talked about that has worked so hard with Dr. Oliva to bring this, uh, plan to fruition. Then of course you see the DCSI, that's the District Coordinator for School Improvement. We had to name a district coordinator for school improvement and I'll be working very closely, as Dr. Porter said, with Dr. Oliva, uh, and, and, and moving the campus forward. We think that we're going to move the needle, uh, far from an academic achievement standpoint. Next slide. We're ready for Dr. Oliva to talk about the, uh, targeted improvement plan at this point.
Good evening, Dr. Porter and members of the board. Uh, we have been working very hard at Thomas Jefferson to improve student achievement. Uh, before you, as a Thomas Jefferson's targeted improvement plan, there were five steps that we had to take in order to develop this plan. Uh, step one was an evidence collection plan, which meant we had to collect evidence of everything that we were putting on the plan. Uh, next it was an essential action analysis out of the five levers and the 13 essential actions. We had to look at every one of those and rate ourselves and then check to see which ones we were going to prioritize on. Then we had a focus area identification, which meant that out of the five levers, TEA recommends that we only focus on two to three to improve on, which would be a very realistic goal. We also had to identify barriers. Uh, we did a barrier analysis and looked at the things that could potentially prevent us from accomplishing our goal. And then at the end, from after doing all those four steps, we were finally able to develop our campus improvement plan. So part of the process, including a, uh, a, uh, deep data dig, where we looked at several data points in order to complete the plan. Part of that included us going into TEA's A through F calculator. What that meant is we went into the website. It gave us some numbers and we were able to manipulate numbers to a point to see how much growth we needed to make to get out of the F status in each of the domains. So from that, we got the scores, um, from our needs assessment. So we want to be met standard by the end of the 2020 school year. So looking at the A through F calculator, we determined that we would need at least a scale score of a 65 in domain one. And then in domain two, we would need a scale score of 72. So when we automatically increase in domain one and domain two, it automatically increased domain three up to a 66. And if we're able to accomplish these goals, that would make Thomas Jefferson receive at least a C rating, which is our goal. Of the five levers and 13 essential actions, uh, from, from the data, we were able to determine our three areas where we need to focus to move Thomas Jefferson forward. So our priority area number one was under 3.1 positive school culture. So in that, it consisted of us getting together and developing a compelling, aligned vision, mission, goals, and values focused on a safe environment and high expectations. So at Thomas Jefferson, we have had a lot of, um, faculty and staff input, stakeholder input to redefine our vision and our mission. Uh, we do have a high culture of expectations that we have. We have set, our targeted improvement plan includes, uh, three cycles. We've set, uh, the bar high for our first cycle, our benchmark goals for the first cycle and also for the second and third cycles. So along with the priority one, along with positive school culture, it also includes a lot of parental, uh, engagement activities that we want to do with our parents. Uh, as a matter of fact, right now, we do have a parent meeting going on at Thomas Jefferson with our titanment on the rise, just trying to get our parents also to come on board so that they can support us in our endeavor. Our next priority was 5.1, focusing on effective, uh, instruction and just making sure that everything that we do at Thomas Jefferson is not just aligned with the state standards, but also making sure that the, the instruction is aligned with the state standards. We want everything to be aligned, uh, with what TEA guidelines have set forth. So we're looking at daily objectives and we're also looking at formative assessments. And with those formative assessments, we're also doing three-week checkpoints or common assessments to ensure that our students are on the right path. This also includes, uh, differentiating to meet the needs of our English learners and our special education populate, population, um, using corrective, corrective instruction, differentiated instruction to meet the needs of all of our students and also making sure that our students are also setting goals for themselves and are monitoring their own progress as well. And our last priority area, uh, is 5.3, under effective instruction, but this one is for data-driven instruction. And this is where we're focusing a lot with our students, having, uh, conferences with our students and letting them see what they made last year because the goal is for them to remain or, uh, progress. Our goal is not to have anybody regress, nobody, uh, falling behind. So if our students can maintain or progress, we will be out of our F campus. So we've been looking at our lead forward data, trying to look at our, um, quintile reports and from there we're seeing the list of students that did regress last year and we are addressing those students and making sure that teachers are aware and that those students are aware that they cannot regress anymore. So we are in the process, we have just completed developing an academic profile sheet that we will be focusing on our students who have not been masters. We have some students that have not mastered, uh, a start test since the third grade. Like they failed the start test every single year. So we are looking at the whole student. We're looking to see if they're in 504, if they're in special ed, if they're English learners. Uh, this also includes tough paths, uh, because we did not receive points for English learners. So we are targeting every single student population. So with that being said, we, uh, want to make sure that, uh, our plan is approved. This is just an overview. There are other details, uh, and, but this is what we'll be sending to TEA. Our priority areas are on positive school culture and effective instruction.
Trustees, any questions?
I have a question. When you do the conferences with the students, do you try to include the parents in those conferences?
Yes. First we, first we're talking to the students and then we'll follow up with a, with a call to the parent. Right now it's a slow progress because we just finished taking CBAs. So we don't just want to give them last year's scores, but we also want to see how the students did on their CBA. So right now, next week, we'll be doing our data PLCs where we will have more current data to see how the students, uh, did on this first CBA. But yes, we want to include and we will be having, um, some parent meetings so that we can go over the data and it'll be by department. So the math, the Ealar, the science and social studies departments will be having their own meetings with the parents because we don't want to overwhelm parents with a whole lot of information. We want it to be targeted for whatever the student needs. So not all the students need all of the content areas. Some of them just need to do well in, or didn't succeed in one area. So we're going to focus on that area. So we're waiting for our data PLC next week.
Ms. Ambrose, Ms. Ambrose.
Thank you, Dr. Oliva, for the presentation. I have a question. So let's go back to something you said about students that have not mastered the start test since the third grade.
Yes.
Is there at some point, I'm sure there is, that if they don't pass the test, that they should not be promoted? So I mean...
That's under the Student Success Initiative and that's for grades five and eight.
Grades five and eight, but there are still students that has not mastered since the third grade?
Yes. And then they go to the, uh, summer school program there where they receive accelerated instruction and then they're able to go on to the next grade with, with a specific plan. Like for example, our students that are, have been unsuccessful, they are double booked. Like if they fail the math test, they'll have a math class with a math lab that provides them with intervention. If they failed the Ealar test, they have that reading class, the writing class, and then an extra, uh, lap, English lab, where they also receive extra accommodation. So that's what we've done for those students that have not been successful.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Oliva, um, concerning the conversations that you'll be having with the students and their parents, um, is this going to be an ongoing conversation throughout the year?
Yes.
You know, in other word, and the other thing too, I wanted to know, like say for example, if you have a sixth grade student and just coming into your school that has a history of not being successful, is this somebody that you're going to chart sixth through eighth grade, have a file?
We have our student, our student academic profile sheet that we just finished creating.
Yeah.
That's the, that's what we will be having because on that academic profile sheet, it has, uh, if the student is dyslexic, speech 504, special ed, uh, what, um, RTI and what tier. And then it monitors their attendance, their behavior, even their AR points every six weeks, along with their progress report grade, their benchmark assessment grade, and then their progress report grade, I mean, the report card grade. And then at the bottom, what beginning of year interventions, middle of year interventions, and end of year interventions are being provided for that student.
Uh, but as far as the progress is concerned, whether it's regressive or progressive, is this something that you, you're going to show the progress to the parents?
Yes.
Uh, cause you know, again, and I know how you are and, and I, and I really have, you know, I appreciate you and respect you a lot. Um, but you know, our parents in this community, we've got to get them more involved and they need to be highly aware of where their kid is going before they enter high school. And so I'm glad that you're going to be doing this because I want them to see, hey, your child, when they came in here at sixth grade and say it's their seventh grade year, this is where they were, this is they are now, where they are now. And even if they're regressing, I mean, we gotta have our parents realize, you know, you have to be on board because I know you're doing everything you can and I know what you expect of your staff and I know that they're going to be on board. Parents in this community of Port Arthur, where you're at right now, have got to be on board. And, and I like what you're doing because that more or less lets the no, yes, we're forcing you to take an, an active role in what we're doing with your child at this school. So thanks a lot.
And we have, um, teachers have been very proactive already, uh, contacting parents because at the progress report, uh, grade, you have some kids that are probably not, uh, doing that well. So teachers have been making phone calls to those parents, even at members of the administrative team. Sometimes the students, uh, that are not doing well also might have a behavior issue. So we've been conferencing with parents. Uh, and we've had pretty good support from the parents. We've had a lot of parents come by the school. So they are aware of things that are about to happen. We will be sending notifications out once those meetings are set. Uh, we're waiting, like I said, for the first, uh, six-week CBA results. And, uh, but we will be continuing almost every six weeks for sure, having meetings with parents aside from the ones that the departments will have with the parents also.
Well, I'd like for you to know then, I, I feel like the board feels this way too, that we support you 100% in getting the parents involved. Uh, we know that you were the right choice for being principal at, at Thomas Jefferson Middle School. We back you 100%. And I, and I would like to hear from you toward the end of the year, for you to give us an update and let us know how all of this is going. But you know, when you speak to your parents, you let them know you've got 100% support from the very top to your own staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything more questions by the trustee? Well, Dr. Getwood and Dr. Oliva, thank you for taking on the task and turning, uh, Thomas Jefferson Middle School around. I know it's going to be hard, but like, uh, Secretary Reed said, we do have you back. We support you 100% from the top all down. And with anything you need, just let Dr. Porter know.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Barti, board members, and as Dr. Oliva, all of our principals are working extremely hard. I think they're still excited about the progress that was made on last year and they definitely want to get to the next level. So they are working hard along with all of our curriculum specialists, our counselors, uh, support personnel, transportation, cafeteria workers. Everyone is just working really hard for our students and they seem to be starting to appreciate that. So we're happy. That concludes our staff report.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Minutes, considering if appropriate, approval of the August 22nd, 2019 board meeting. Take a motion? Got a motion on floor by trustee Ambrose and second by trustee Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consider agenda. The following items in which of our routine and recoordination has been decided is sent agenda by the pres, the board president, per policy due law. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee. In which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the item not requested, required, separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustees are given a minute to look over the consent agenda. And can I get a motion to? Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Can I get the second? I have a motion on the floor by, uh, secretary Reed and a second by trustee Lofton to approve items one through 29. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel, consider and if appropriate approve the employment of teachers. Any motion? Second?
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by trustee Ambrose and second by trustee Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consider if and appropriate approve the employment of child nutrition director.
President Barti, I am recommending Mr. Robin Rhodes for the child nutrition director.
We have a motion on the floor. Can you get the second? I have a motion on the floor by trustee Brown and second by secretary Reed. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
President Barti and board members, I am recommending the employment of elementary math supervisor, Mary Ann LeBlanc.
Okay, a motion on the floor?
Motion.
A second? I have a motion by trustee Brown and second by trustee Ambrose. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Information, Dr. Porter.
For the month of August, average day day enrollment, 8,201. Average day day attendance, 96, 48%.
Ms. Ambrose?
Mr. President, Dr. Porter, I wish to look in this year, compared to last year, in terms of, have we?
We, we did have a little increase. We, we have a slight increase. We have about 8,400 students and we ended with 8,300. So we're doing well.
Can you vote to adjourn the meeting at 7:26? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.